Having a call. But on that side, we need to order, we have a roll call.
Certainly, may I ask Sarah to go with that?
Here.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
Mark Johnson, here. All right, we have one.
Next item is approval of today's agenda.
I'm sure so moved.
Thank you.
All second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
And then minutes from the April third. Um, PRS review something.
I'm sure we'll do improvements from the meeting.
And all second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
We're now public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have none that I'm aware of.
Okay. We're now in business debate.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. Jeremy Smith for the record. I'm going to bring up this PowerPoint and share the screen first.
We all laugh. Thanks so much.
Shelley, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeremy. All right, so just a quick recap of some of the stuff we've been talking about as we've gone through this process to try to incorporate larger charter and private schools as projects of regional significance. So, let's see here, upfront. PRS, concept created in the vast device statutes. It provides some very specific criteria on what constitutes a PRS, but it also enables some powers to the Regional Planning Commission to set guidelines. And specifically, that's in the definitions for our county size two seventy eight dot which six. It basically said that it's a PRS that has been identified in the guidelines of the Regional Planning Commission as a project which will have significant effect on natural resources, public services, other facilities, including without limitation schools for the adopted regional form of the region. So if that's really the guideline or the piece of NRS that we're using to establish some of these rules in the guideline. Here's the guideline as it's been written and proposed so far. So, partly will require change in zoning, special use permit amendment to master plan, attentive back or any of or any other approval for the use of land, and that's how they all start really. Which if approved will allow for a new school within the TMSA with a planned student enrollment capacity of five hundred or greater that is not identified in the Washington School District Facilities. Okay, so some of the rationale as to why we're taking this on.
I spit a more on the far right.
Okay.
We go to hide loading meeting.
Loading. Thank you very much. Okay, good. Escape gets your tasker done. My tasker complete. Okay, so we certainly have a PRS guideline that was added by the Regional Planning Commission that addresses impacts to schools. That's when a development of any kind would trigger student generation of three hundred twenty five students or greater that will qualify as a PRS. Uh, but we don't have a guideline that addresses impacts from schools. And the way that we typically look at impacts that are caused by schools is by going to the Washington County School District Facilities Plan. And that's a process that's similar to any of our affected entity uh, performance review type scenario where that plan is better against regional planner reviewed and then found either in performance or out of performance. And inside that plan are all of the planned school locations from the school district. So we're really looking at all, all future schools are being reviewed through that plan. We learned through the process that no regional review exists for charter of private schools. And we also know that jurisdiction, the admin review that jurisdictions do for school approvals doesn't necessarily trigger a public period. And so, one of the things that this is seeking to do also is provide some transparency. And so we think that adding this guideline to the resolution for PRS will again for large schools that are not included in the Washington School District Facilities Plan. We did some analysis. Okay. Okay, so we, we did try to take a look at some traffic data. The pink dots on this map are N dot a Trina traffic locations. You can get the data online. And what we found is that none of them were really situated that well. And we looked across the region for examples of how we could use that to understand the traffic signals around any, any school really. And just wasn't up to the task. The, the stuff is there. It's not, hasn't been recorded for this purpose. And so didn't really fit the bill. We also looked at proximity of different schools and found that, you know, that, that's a pretty, it's hard to do that globally and that really a case by case look at those proximity of those ingress egress sort of such as what we need. So finally, we ended up analyzing the frequency distribution of charter and private schools in the region. That just means that this graph of red here. How many charter and private schools do we have in the region and what sort of enrollment sizes do they have? Now, as we've gone through all of these discussions, both the governing board and the planning commission have indicated that there are observed impacts around some of these larger schools. Those typically that the names that are mentioned are Doral, Pinecrest, Bishopmano and Fort Worth. And so we found that we drew the line at five hundred. We capture those big schools that seem to be the ones that are the folks are concerned about that are creating the impact. And what that does is it really just kind of limits the burden on everyone, I think, to just those schools that you think are having these impacts, not kind of pay attention to smaller things. That we don't think are created. So just to kind of give us another information point about size, we looked at all Washington County Schools, the schools. And we found this basic natural break at around five hundred students as well. It really is, it's the mode. So I think that gave us a little more evidence that five hundred was a decent number to, to go. So, since then, uh, you've gotten some new information from you guys at academic that talked about student trip generation, which I know we'll hear more about in a little bit, but we kind of took a stab at thinking about uh, trip generation in terms of peak periods. So even though we're not trying to use the sixty two fifty daily trips as the criteria through which we would say this is a PRS. We thought that would be a useful way to kind of quantify the trip generation that you guys provided. What are the student enrollments that would be necessary to kind of reach that level? That's equivalent in the time the trips are being are happening. What would be the enrollment levels that would trigger that? And so we, we took four, sorry, three, um, three time periods. Started with a four hour time period. The rationale there was, okay, maybe there's a roughly a two hour peak in the morning, drop off peak, two hour peak in the afternoon, it's a peak kind of a thing. And so, what is the student enrollment that if all of the trips are happening within a four hour period that you would need to generate that PRS level congestion at that time? And that turned out to be four hundred twenty trips or enrollments, sorry, four hundred twenty student. If you look at longer time periods with that same two point four eight, you can find that you need more students to generate that commensurate sort of peak congestion feeling. You actually need more students from this more time. So with the six hour window, the number was six hundred thirty student enrollment and with the eight hour window, eight hundred forty now, which is, these are discussion points for some way to quantitatively assess how can we get to a number that is capturing, you know, our understanding of this congestion and the impact. That's sort of a new thing. Um, we can talk more about that. And then also doesn't like me. So I also pulled up this map. This is from our, our online regional plan map data viewer. And what it's showing is the area on Mount Rose Highway. And this is the Doral Academy, it's white shade. And then this is the Galena High School. And what's interesting about this is you'll notice that they're in different jurisdictions. So this dark blue is the city of Reno city limits and the light blue is the city of Reno sphere of influence. So the city actually is in charge of planning anywhere that either of the blue colors. And the academy is in charge of planning anywhere that isn't colored. That's the unincorporated planning staff. And so, in thinking about that, one of our roles is to provide this regional lens. And so knowing that the two schools use the same roadway system right there. But as I've laid out there in different jurisdictions, in situations like this, there is no mechanism to guarantee that the two jurisdictions are going to coordinate planning efforts across those boundaries. And in fact, that's where regional planning often comes in is that we will consider cross jurisdictional impacts and, and take a look at that. So that's, you know, another reason to be thinking about a regional lens for, with these, especially when sites are co-located nearby within different jurisdictions. Some other last points, uh, previous discussion from the RPC has been that we think it's important that we have a clear threshold so that it's unambiguous the application of this guideline. Uh, one of the commissioners had an R six expressed that they thought five hundred was a little low. Uh, we did also coordinate with the Nevada State Public Charter School Authority. That's why you guys are here today. That put it on the radar. And so we're having this conversation. So that definitely is in place. And then any of the interview we do of a charter private school, we do the threshold, we could be looking at impacts for regional infrastructure. We'll be looking also at proximity to consistent or planned schools. Nearby other charters with the W sixty or private schools or whatever. And this information will also be very useful for our public infrastructure plan. So having the PRS review for the large schools, knowing where those things are planned, allows to build that into that knowledge base as well. So with that, uh, there is a motion which we don't have to look at right now. But, uh, oh my God, I came again there. Yeah. So you got, right, so okay, we want to escape. And then, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think then if you turn it over to Amy Colton to take us through the next steps. You guys have any questions for me?
Not based on the presentation at this point.
Okay, cool. Well, then we got this and Colton, you can just tell me, uh,
Yeah, before I jump into that, I'm curious the math breakdown on your new chart here.
Do you want to go back to the chart?
I wasn't, I didn't really follow the math. I'm curious to just look at that just for a moment.
Excuse me, do you mind identifying yourself?
Yes, I'm Colton Loretz from Academia and Red and Street Charters close here and apologize for the record.
Okay, here we go.
What's the calculation that gets you to four twenty there is my quick question. And then obviously it's the same calculation applied to both other columns.
Yeah, so I'll tell you the math. I have it down here. So basically, Jeremy, for the record. Okay, so how we get there is six thousand two hundred fifty trips. That's the daily trip thing for PRS. And that then divide that by kind of solving for student trip gen divided by a fraction of twenty four hours. So it's that two point four eight divided by the fraction of twenty four hours, all of that is going to divide into sixty two fifty and that gets you to. So basically, the, the smaller the timeframe, right? The, for example, four twenty, four hundred and twenty times two point four eight is around a thousand. It's about a sixth of sixty two fifty. And so we're saying that it's reaching that level that would, you know, for the twenty four hour signal, that would trigger the PRS. But during that time when it's actually happening versus these schools, the levels are commensurate to that PRS threshold, which is in that short time.
So real quick, a follow up question on that, Colton Loretz for the record. The calculation is solving for what peak traffic generation would be?
Is that it's solving for the student enrollment level needed to generate, uh, trips that will be commensurate to the sixty two fifty within the given timeframe.
Which is a peak timeframe, right?
No, we've looked at three time frames. So we said, okay, what if it's a really a peak focused thing? So it's two hours on the, you know, morning, two hours in the evening. Or what if it's a typical school day, all six hours, the trips are happening. Or what if it's a workday, then all the trips are happening? And then the more time you give it, the higher the student enrollment needs to be. With, with that, uh, trip generation amount. Okay, to me.
Uh, yeah, for the record, this is Colton Loretz. So if we jump back to that video, I just wanted that as a frame of reference because I do jump into trip generation data, peak copy, uh, data that we have for, uh, several schools and there uh, two of which are in Washington County, two of which are identified as uh, two of the four schools as the problem children here, uh, I guess, uh, which you, this body is trying to, uh, create that threshold level of five hundred or greater. So on this first page, uh, and this was in public comment at the meeting where it was tabled. Uh, if you could zoom out a little bit, Jeremy, and just show kind of a full page view of each one, I think that'd probably be good. Um, so what was contemplated language is that language. Uh, we did an analysis of the factors five through seven because in the April third PRX meeting, um, there was commentary about um, not knowing the actual impact of a school of a certain threshold. Uh, we have a lot of data and we've, we help our schools facilitate financing and development and all that when they identify a site and they want to move forward with a, either a new campus or an expansion campus. Uh, so if you jump to page two, uh, it breaks down to, um, each factor. But the only factor that's relevant in, in our view is the one here in the red font, which is traffic, right? And I think this body sort of has, uh, commented on that. Employment, you're never going to hit there. Impact on housing and hotel rooms is never going to be applicable. Sewage is very, very minimal. Water is very, very minimal. And it's never going to increase student population to an area. Because we're talking trucky metal service area as the contemplated area. If there are new students to the area, it would only be students coming from without, outside of the county and that would be very negligible. And our view is less than one percent enrollment at a, at a public charter school. Um, so I just wanted to quickly show this. Uh, this is data, uh, which is from a two K campuses here, Doral Academy and Pinecrest Academy. That trip data is averaged to about twenty five fifteen. Um, so it would require closer to twenty four hundred student enrollment. So you can get close to traditional PRS standards for, uh, traffic counts. And I know that this body has had multiple comments about it, not only about trip generations, about those peak hours, which is why I was trying to ask about that chart just before this, which is trying to get at those peak times and pick up drop off times is really the best way to label them if you want to label them. Um, so on the other view, if you're looking at just traditional PRS guidelines without this new language added there, you need a significantly higher student enrollment, um, to hit anywhere close to where traffic would be a concern. But acknowledging this body's concern of, uh, uh, peak hours, I did a little deeper dive on this. Um, so if page three and four are kind of some commentary from that last April third PRS committee that I kind of pulled out. Um, Jerry, if you want to jump to the title there and go full screen so, so right, yeah. Um, so it was not, there's not, sorry, not Trina data, the exact same data that Jerry Smith just, just mentioned. Uh, unfortunately, the Trina data only track, uh, tracks those major roads nearby. But if you think Doral Academy, for example, it's only tracking Mount Rose Highway. There's no way to know what's going to Doral Academy, Galena, uh, St. St. Mary's Clinic, TMCC, Hewitt Offspring, Rayleigh Shopping Center right in that area, let alone to and from work or home. Uh, so I think the Trina data, granted salt, and I think Director Smith acknowledges that. Uh, it doesn't capture ingress egress for schools. It does not, it was not collected for that purpose of a site specific analysis. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I think that the, the kind of random part here is that we haven't been able to measure impact. Uh, we have been able to have data that mathematically ties the enrollment number to, uh, to the actual impact of charter schools. Um, and, and the other line of that, we just don't have that information. What, what is a little frustrating to us from charter school wrong is nobody came out of the charter schools. Um, we found out about this kind of late in the process, unfortunately, uh, like about a week or some couple of weeks before the RPC meeting when it was going to be approved. Um, that item was tabled, obviously, so allowed for further conversation here today. Um, but some of the commentary or it's, it's an arbitrary threshold. I think all three chairs, all three commissioners actually said arbitrary when that number was mentioned at five hundred because there was no data tied to it, or at least sufficient data in, in our view. Uh, so if you, uh, there was kind of no else about Coral Academy and middle school, which is off in Ninth Street, very close to the county complex and how the county employees are frustrated when, when Coral Academy would let out. Um, that's just for planning on the Coral Academy development in our opinion, because they didn't, they didn't allow for parking loop. They didn't allow for congestion mitigation. Uh, our schools are very much, very, very different in, in that sense. We, uh, if I go to the next page here, there's kind of a couple more comments. Um, I highlighted kind of the arbitrary comment, which was by each commissioner from that, uh, last, uh, PRS meeting. There was a comment that says peak hour traffic is not a regional level concern. I, I would agree with that. Um, but, but it's already handled at a local level. So I think it was Commissioner Johnson that made that comment. And it's kind of in the middle of this page here on page four or twelve. Um, it's not this body's role to, uh, deal with peak hour traffic, but I kind of disagree with that. The trip count kind of tracks peak hour. And I have data later in this presentation that shows how it kind of correlates. Um, we, we break it down by AM and PM peak traffic as well as an aggregate daily, uh, trip count. Um, I don't believe any of them would hit a threshold of PRS, but I mean, that, that's data driven as well. So if we kind of run through this, um, I highlighted on this page, trip generation appears to track peak hour. I say appears because every site is different. If you put one close to Mount Rose Highway, it's going to be a lot different than one that's kind of more in the suburbs. Uh, you know, you're not going to have a major road right by your site that's going to attribute to some more traffic. You know, it could be next to another, another high school, for example. Um, then there was a commentary by Chair, uh, by the Chair that said this demonstrates for more robust analysis. So, that underwashed analysis is what we're trying to do here today is give you additional information. Uh, if you want to skip over page five, those would be just more notes that I had on, um, that last subcommittee meeting, because I had to kind of play a little catch up here. Um, if you jump to page six here, Director Smith.
And for the record, you're sharing, you're sharing a presentation that this body has not.
This body has seen public commentary.
Stuff, but not.
Very similar to this, but then I never doubt more L two peak traffic.
Have this just other than your presentation.
We just like Chairman Smith, save it.
This will be part of your record, though. Yes.
We just don't have it. So we need to see things.
That's why he's.
In, in, in an ideal world, I would, well, I had a lot more lead time to get all of this put together as well. So I apologize for that. Um, so that's more of the generation. If, if you break it down, nine sixty is the starting number because that's both Doral and Pinecrest Academy's enrollment numbers when they were developed. Um, I put it in green because you're still nowhere near a trip generation data until you're closer to two thousand twenty two hundred, twenty three hundred in data there. So obviously the farther you go, the more it's in the red, so to speak, uh, that's solely trip generation data. Um, if you were to even take the extreme, if you scroll down, Jeremy, take an extreme of three trips per student, that means somehow there's a third trip in there to pick up a drop off and some other third trip. Uh, maybe it accounts for some staff, but staff is a red, rather negligible, uh, data point here because staff is outnumbered ten of twenty to one, thirty to one of our schools here. Um, even if you ever take a three trip per student average, you still know where there's close to your trip generation data. And I say that because trip generation data is relevant, uh, towards that peak hour, right? If you don't have a high failing, you don't have that high peak. Um, so if we jump to the next page, uh, Jeremy, on page seven. Um, I was trying to differentiate Coral Academy to, uh, Doral Academy or, uh, Pinecrest Academy, for example, because uh, those two campuses as well as Mater Academy, which is a rather smaller school. They share a campus with Boys and Girls Club on Ninth Street over by El Rancho Theater. Um, all these campuses implement these factors, staggered bell schedules because they're K eight, they have elementary and middle school all under one roof. The staggered bell schedule is basically, it would stagger the trips and when they arrive. So you got elementary showing up about an hour before middle school. So your total daily trip count, it, your, your peak is basically going to be cut and cut as well because of that staggered bell schedule. It is, um, apple planning into traffic mitigation, exactly the reason for that. And while I was thoughtful planning of schools nearby, so that we're not hitting district and charter school bell times all at the same time. Uh, before and after school programming is another factor. It reduces uh, that, that before and after peak time at fifteen percent approximately based on our data. Uh, plus or minus depends on the location of the site. Um, our traffic queue systems on point three is probably the most unique, uh, aspect. We have parking loops around our whole building. That allows for all of the traffic to get off of the, of the, uh, public roads for the middle part. They're going to have some parents that don't want to get in the parking queue and they're going to be ones we can't control. They're on public property. We can't say you can't park on the public street. Um, and then the last piece of buzzing, historically, we have not had transportation funding. Uh, but we have made do without it because of these queuing systems, because of the before and after school creativity and before, because of staggered bell schedule. So to point to the lack of transportation as the the fact that we have this significantly more, uh, traffic, I, I think is kind of a logical fallacy to some extent. Uh, if you jump to the next page, it shows examples of those parking loops. If you haven't actually been at the campus, so the, the loop goes all the way around the school. There's a two lane at Doral. One lane is dedicated to pick up and drop off at those peak, peak hours. So we would get hundreds of cars lined up around the building. So it takes all of that traffic off the main streets. It's no longer an issue. But if there's traffic that's an issue, it's maybe those few parents who are not wanting to get off the public road. Or it's Galena, which is almost a fifty acre parcel and has a, a much higher capacity. So it's not necessarily Doral to blame if there's a high traffic at that point. Um, that's just one example. The next page shows Pinecrest as an example. I just took a Google map aerial of it. Um, so if I had that up here, I have a parking loop, three sixty around the building as well. I think you're on page nine.
Yes, is that it?
Yep. Uh, so once again, you, you would queue on, most likely it's the left lane, but most times closest to the building, the right lane is a three lane. So it allows for a lot of parking to get out of the silence, very well, which is close to residences. Um, I ultimately made a note here on the bottom because there was a comment by Commissioner Johnson, I believe, uh, at the April third PRS committee that local jurisdictions will require adding speed monitoring mechanisms and possibly even traffic lights. This is a perfect example. This campus had to build the traffic light or contribute to the cost at least at the Caillada La Plata stoplight, which is a dedicated turn lane now, which actually is a really long turn lane, allows for trucks to put in logistics in that area. It allows for residents, all of that to not have to, uh, run the pedals of like a four way stop or no mechanism whatsoever there. So, um, the local level is taking very careful consideration in our view about those mechanisms and also traffic lights. So that's a perfect example. Uh, and this is a school that's not like Doral where it's sitting right next to Mount Rose Highway. It's close to Caillada La Plata and Pyramid Highway, but it's off in kind of second way in the neighborhood, which is actually more ideal in our, our opinion. Um, so the, the last couple of pages are the actual traffic data here. Um, so I have examples of, uh, the, the two averages we provided are two point six three and two point four eight. Those are two different averages from two different schools here in Los Angeles. Uh, or excuse me, two point six three is actually the state average, is my understanding, from Lockston Engineering Firm. They have said that a private or a charter school, which does not have transportation, that is your student trip count. I would suspect that the districts is slightly slower because they have busing. Um, but even at two point six three, you don't hit trip generation and peak out, peak con, con, uh, congestion, excuse me, that would warrant PRS in our view. Uh, if you take the example here, the Doral highlight, um, that's two point four eight times nine sixty, it comes out to twenty three eighty one. So you're talking about uh, a little less than a, a third of the trip generations. The actual peak data is in the charts here. So this is the actual chart from the development of Doral. Um, AM, you have entering. You have less exiting because you probably pick up some staff that were showing up. We don't have a first period or we don't have a before and after school type thing. So you actually have a lot less exiting than you do entering um, on this chart here, which is a nine sixty K eight. It's labeled private school. That's not technically accurate. They took private school data because public charter schools don't have transportation. So private schools are the closest data chart that they could actually use for public, uh, K eight charters. Um, so this is all data that is used actively by, um, engineering firms, Lockston Engineering, for example, is one that we work with in some of our developments. Uh, the data is always as less at the peak. So you actually are getting less there. Uh, and I would argue it's actually fifteen percent less because of before the school care. Same on the backend. It's actually fifteen percent less on the after school care. Um, it doesn't actually take into account our parking loop. Doesn't actually take into account the staggered bell schedules. So cut the numbers in half at entering and exiting or exiting, I guess, whoever enters doesn't have that exit there. But you would have a half the exiting trip for the ones that actually do exit. Um, you'd have a half the entering trips. There with the, with also the reduction of fifteen percent out of for actual care. So while that's the number that's average, it doesn't account those four variables that I mentioned before. And transportation binding is also something that's evolving in the, with the legislature right now, is we might have the ability to also have transportation plans. That would also mitigate these numbers significantly as well if we could allow, if we could have, uh, school buses, small buses, large buses, um, or some other alternative to create transportation. So, uh, that could generation, one extreme example is on the next page of a school actually down in Clark County that has sixteen hundred and fifty students and their peak uh, AM PM is actually a little, uh, their entering is a little higher. Exiting is a little lower, but their entering is actually, their, their PM peak hour is actually less. So it's really, really kind of strange data. They have a school, uh, nearly double the size in Clark County, had differing traffic studies because it's a different area. Now, obviously it's a different patient, uh, and all of that, but you're nearly doubling the student count. And we still aren't at trip generation, six thousand two hundred and fifty, which is your threshold in trucky metals. Granted, this isn't a project in the trucky metals, but as an example, um, there is not apparently a charter school of that size here. Um, but the peak hour traffic is very close tracking with the Doral kind of numbers. So, uh, with that, my, my thought about, I mean, giving this data to this body is, uh, starting the conversation of what that, what the threshold actually should look like and what the data tells you that the number should be a little, it should be higher. Uh, that's, that's our thought process here. Uh, and I think we also have some commentary from SBCSA, um, as well as Mr. Blazer.
Yeah, um, I know that, thank you, Eddie Alves for the record, on behalf of Tri Strategies, we're a lobbying firm that represents, um, academic of the three schools, Mater, Doral and Pinecrest, based here as well as other schools in the south. Um, first, I just want to thank the Chair for, uh, holding the motion at the last meeting. Um, first, I just want to thank the chair for uh holding the motion at the last meeting so that we can have this opportunity to get together. Greatly appreciated because we felt sort of initially that we were sort of shocked by the process. Uh, you know, I know I conveyed, Chairman, like, what's going on here, it felt like it sort of spiraled out of control that we weren't involved. And so I greatly appreciate the chance uh to come to the table and and talk what we believe is uniquely different. Because in reviewing um, in reviewing the minutes, I think there was some robust conversations that your team had, that the commission had. With um, a variety of stakeholders. And uh, my my first initial response would be that that our concern was what was portrayed. Came specifically from um, the members and and stakeholders at the Washington County School District that talked about public charter schools. I think that's important because, you know, what what they provided um was their experience, what they see. But they, the Washington County Public Charter Schools are authorized by the district and not by the state. And I think there's a need for differentiation for our commissioners to understand that. A Washington County District Charter is very different, I I believe they're not a part of the facilities plan. Uh, they go through a different approval process, which is unique and vastly um. Uh, different than what the schools that we've talked about here, the two of the schools that we've talked about here, those are state public authorized schools. And what Doral and Pinecrest and Matter have to go through in order just to get started um is a huge lift. And so reviewing some of the the prior meeting notes, we heard a comment about Doral Academy, I I just wanted to use this as a chance to say. The process worked perfectly, in my opinion. I was involved in Doral Academy when they first looked at the site over by uh Yee Ha Way. Or by DeMonte Ranch High School, wasn't the ideal site. Uh, community members, we had, we held, we went through the process, right? So there's um, like four public hearings and the community got involved. This doesn't seem to be the uh perfect site, we did traffic studies, almost it seemed to get there, but there was still some concerns by the community. And so with the city council, because that was in the city of Reno, uh councilwoman Doer and myself and and at that time Boggs and all got together and talked about. Well, what could be the possible solution here? So there was public comments, of course, parents are articulating, we want a school, and that's great, right? We wanted a school, where does the school go? Uh, we had neighbors saying, this is not the ideal site, we're not against the school, the site was not ideal. And so thanks to the leadership by city council members in Reno, it created collaboration. And there was a site, which is the current site that was identified. Then we had to go through the process all over again, which extended it out a year. Um, and and that's no, that's no mistake to anyone in the process, it was just simply finding the more ideal site was perfect. And traffic sightings were engaged, um, we put together our plan on, and I think Colton did a great job of emphasizing that. That the state public charter school schools have to go through an intense scrutiny at the authorizer level. Our authorizers go through like very strict um guidelines to make sure that we are not. One, impacting the school district. So every one of our schools gets um a response by the school district and the authorizers, authorizers get to hear from the school district. And I'm just going to give you a perfect example, the school district already submitted a response on a proposed site. And included this item in the response to the to a a site that might come up um for approval. Um, you know, nowhere else in the country do we have that type of relationship where the district works hand in hand with the state public charter school authority. And that's unique, I I think the district also does its own thing for its own schools, but specifically to the SBCSA, we create a collaboration. That's the first thing, and so back to Doral, there was a strong collaboration to make sure that the split staggered bell schedule would be adjusted. And would start and end opposite time when Galena happened. Um, and and that was part of the proposal, that was in the public uh minutes, that was part of the application that we had to submit to the authorizer. The authorizer then um gave us initial approval and we had to go back to the county at this point to go through the entire thing all over again. Um, so I I think the information provided today is not to try to um change the direction or the intent of what you guys are wanting to do. It's to provide data about the unique differences between a state public authorized school and a Washington County Charter School. Um, it's my understanding, Washington County Charter Schools don't go through nearly the amount of scrutiny and and public transparency that a state public charter school goes through. And so we think it's fair, if you know, that there's a differentiation perhaps put in place. Um, you know, the transparency that I think it's in your notes, all the different meetings, it's almost a two year process for one of those schools to go forward. And so how I reviewed some of the notes from the Washington County School District and when they presented their facilities plan. It's very similar to what a single school has to go through with the authorizer. And so perhaps we can contemplate that some of these state public charter schools go through such um. Vast amounts of public meetings and and approval processes, almost a two year process at the authorizing and local level. It it reflects somewhat of what a facilities plan at the district level has to go through. And what we're not doing is these, you know, pop up shop schools that happen without um public scrutiny. And so perhaps we can visualize that, that similar to how the facility plan for WCSB is excluded in this proposal. Maybe our SBCSA schools could similarly be excluded because the the vast amounts of processes they have to go through. And that's notwithstanding the data that was presented, which I think is a good conversation, but you know, Director Smith talked about transparency. I want to be clear, we think we are transparent, like we go into the community, the Pinecrest School up in Sparks. I can tell you, the amount of public, like neighborhood meetings um was intense, was uh tremendous. I mean, hearing neighbors like just being excited, there was, I think, over five total public, just that we put on. And then we included SBCSA staff to join us and and so the director came and participated in that. Um, I think the biggest differentiation here is that not, when we say charters, they're not all alike, right? They're very different, they're uniquely different. Um, you know, the the peak school uh peak traffic hour and the time that we put in place to create these mechanisms. That really create no traffic on any arterial road, I mean, it's impressive to think that we go to an extent. Having staggered times, so you have to take the school and split it in half and half the school leaves at different times and shows up at different times. And then you put this huge loop around the school. And then you have a busing program because what Colton did mention, we actually, all schools, Matter, Doral and Pinecrest have invested in the extensive busing. That moves children to after school programming that doesn't exist on site. And so you're leaving at the school campus with a lot of kids and a bus program. The state just approved seven million dollars a year for all state public char- chartered um schools for a whole new busing rollout. That's going to be tremendously helpful in meeting some of those mitigation standards. Um, and so I think. Having sort of, I think, a like a a better view of all these pieces, again, is really important. The other piece that I wanted to mention before maybe I turn over to um the member from the authorizer. Schools, unlike businesses that you are uh oftentimes having to look at, have very set windows when they have to start, right? Like, if a school doesn't open that second week in August, that school might never open from a charter school perspective. Charter charter schools from the state don't get local funds. Um, so if there's no kids to fill the school, there's no, there's no DSA, there's no um. A daily student attendance or per people funding for that school, so now it sits vacant for a year if we miss a window. And so some of the things that I mentioned, Director Smith, is we think the number should be changed perhaps to visualize something that's more effective. I also feel that perhaps we look at the differentiation between a state public charter school. And a local district charter school because they're, they have to go through very different things. And then the final thing I just leave with you all is perhaps we could visualize language that a school that does have to go through it. That does meet that standard of regional significance, perhaps we can find like a simultaneous or even a prior approval process. So it doesn't delay the opening of the school. Um, I mean, a school, we have a school that's significant and large and has a lot of students, absolutely, we should get it and go through that process. Get that prior approval because, I mean, we do it with with a whole traffic mitigation plan, right? Which we feel that would impress you all and and seek your approval, right? We do think that language in that amendment, so that um a school would not be hindered by a delayed staggered approval process. Going through the locality first and then in our case is going through the authorizer, which like we said is about a two year process. If we can get some of those approvals ahead of time, um, it would ensure that our timelines and our benchmarks are hit. Because we do have to go through, uh, the authorizer provides us with um conditions, they always come back to us with changes to the plan. Those conditions then build and we have to adapt the plan, we we got, reach out to the school district to ensure that the conditions are met there as well. And so um, we don't want this to be the thing that like, you know, the the straw that breaks the camel's back and no kids can go to the school. And that's the third concern I just wanted to raise. Appreciate your time again today.
Yeah. Well, these two gentlemen have done a good job of explaining a lot of the things that I had on my mind. Uh, for the record, I'm Kurt Pickpin, I'm a member of the State Public Charter School Authority, I'm the only member here in Washington County, the rest are. One in Fallon, the rest are in Clark County, so um, prior to that role, I was a trustee on Washington County School Board. I've the last four years visited about thirty schools in Washington County all the way up to Gerlock. So I've gotten very, very familiar with the layout of our schools, how they operate and some of the challenges that go along with opening new schools. Or expanding schools and things like that. Um, I will say, say as disclaimer, I'm not here as in an official capacity to represent SBCSA. Um, but I am here uh as a educate, education advocate, public education advocate, I should say. Um, just to kind of lend some of the, what I know of the process uh and all of that. Um, you see in the packet, there is a charter application timeline, if you get to page seventeen of the final meeting packet. And that perfectly outlines pretty much the gist of what um, any sort of new or expanded uh. Public charter school by the state um goes through. And it it's really extensive and some of the things we're noticing now um throughout the state, not in Washington County, but in other places is that. Um, and just to give you an idea of what, how it happens with these schools is every year they have to meet an enrollment cap. To be able to be financially viable, stay open, to pay their bills, much of them are leasing properties, not necessarily Washington County, but just overall. And so they work through an extensive process of outreach for the community every single year. Um, prior to opening, to opening and post, to get their enrollment numbers up. So one of the things that I'm understanding is that, you know, let's say. The authority approves a new school to open, they have to go through all these things. If they go through this extra step, they could, you know, delay, delay the opening. What I've noticed with some schools is they don't, they truly, they don't get to open. Or they get delayed for two, three years and don't get to open. And so it's kind of like this, um, so many cooks in the kitchen sometimes will will cause a school to fail. And and the purpose, just from from what I'm kind of advocate for personally of the charter schools, the public charter schools. Is to help with overcrowding in our schools, which is still an issue in different communities throughout the county, like the North Valleys, for example. And when you have the overcrowding, that adds to some of these traffic, you know, things that we see in WCSD and other areas. Um, the overcrowding can be solved by, you know, opening a new school and um, I I think that. I'm always approaching this from like, how can we solve a problem for the community? Um, and so I think adding this other layer, and I was on the governing board of TMR, TMRPA. In my capacity as a trustee before and advocated for this as well, I I my goal is to kind of limit the the. The barriers to public education. And so my hope is that you all will see some of the information that's been presented. Definitely work closely with the authority and some of the staff over there because they're great. And they do a good job of of before it even reaches the authority board members of going through some of these things and looking at the region and making sure, you know. Any sort of proposed thing is actually viable and sometimes they'll reject these applications before they make it to board. So that's something to consider, they're very, very laser focused, they're not. It it is a state agency, but they're not there to rubber stamp any of these things, they're because nobody likes to make the decision to have to close a school. We just had to make that decision a few weeks ago in Las Vegas with a school there that became financially unviable. Um, so um, we are very, very focused on making sure that anything that is newly proposed is viable for the long term. That it is working in partnership with local school districts. Um, and that it is really serving the community and doesn't, you know, add to any other burdens. Um, so that that's kind of where I I'm approaching this, I'm trying to maybe take questions as best I can.
Well, thank you all. Um, do we have any other comments?
None that I'm aware of.
So bringing that to the board for um discussion. I, Jeremy, if you could pull up your presentation, please.
Sure.
That points out the jurisdiction, I mean, why you review our projects of regions and movements.
And then Chair Jessica, for the record, I thought of.
Oh, thank you.
A few comments that might help to the set committee. First of all, under our regional planning statutes, which are unique to Washington County. The definition of the PRS was initially adopted at the same time. The regional planning statutes were adopted in nineteen eighty nine. And at that point in time, it was simply the list of the numerical triggers uh that we've been referring to. And the legislative history of the statute basically said, at that point in time, the legislatures were looking at new development. You know, ground zero and the impact it would have on the beach. Then two years thereafter, the legislature amended the definition of PRS again, or amended the definition of PRS. To expand that authority, realizing that there's going to be other projects. That aside from those that trigger those numerical triggers, that hit those numerical triggers. That they want to grant the planning commission discretion to determine whether or not they should be projects commuted or two of the kinds. So they expanded the authority of the planning commission, regional planning commission to adopt additional guidelines. Then I the commission found out, who identified projects that the planning commission thought would have a significant impact on regional pattern and resources. So that's a little kind of like, back in time, that's what the legislature was thinking. So the legislature clearly envisioned not tying the planning commission's hands to those numerical triggers for new large development. And so I thought that, I just wanted to remind, I mean, I know we all know that in this room, I thought it was helpful for everyone to have a reminder. Where this came from in the beginning, and it is unique, it's unique to Washington County. Uh, there is a planning coalition, a regional planning coalition in the south. They are statutory authorized, they have their own definition of the project, which is, so it's definitely an apples and oranges situation. And then I did want to know, as far as when there has to be the conformance review and the timing of that conformance review. It's simply, our statute is purely broad, so it's before there's final approval at the local governmental planning jurisdictional level. And before construction commence, so it can be. Uh, from a legal perspective, see no reason why at the same time. There is an application submitted to the local planning jurisdiction, but that cannot also legally continue to reach. And I think our regional plan also contemplating free look memo and review. So I'm not sure if that's helpful at all for you, if I wanted to remember, this is, this is our statutory playground.
So thank you, Ms. Printin, so to go back to your, we're gonna be here. That's exactly what I wanted to bring back in the reference is what our responsibilities are as a regional planning commission. We all, all three of us represent ju- different jurisdictions. Um, Commissioner Reed represents Sparks, Mr. Johnson represents City of Reno and I represent the Washington County. And our job as regional planning commissioners is to look at the entire region and the entire impact. And when we started talking about, and then when we went through the plan update, and that was when we it. We recognized that we needed to reopen that PRS and come to um some agreement and use data. Um, and so TMRPA staff used data to analyze that. So I appreciate your presentation and I know that I reacted to not having it in my packet, because it does need to be in our packet. And um, so in terms of, it isn't just traffic we're looking, we're looking at our roles and responsibilities for the region. I mean, us as a group, even though we represent different jurisdictions, we come together as a group to look at the impact on the entire. And in Director Smith's opening slide is. And in Director Smith's opening slide is rules are specifically spelled out as impact on the region. So. I'll, I'll hush for a moment and refer to my other commissioners, Commissioner Reed.
Hi, um, I. Absolutely appreciate the additional information and I really liked that quantitative assessment of trips. That you, um. That you showed and some of the other additional information. I had a question for some reason, I, I can't remember. What is the student enrollment? Um, just for Washington County School District schools that, um, would require. A, um, a P R S currently, I can't remember what that number was.
Madam Chair, Jeremy's with the record, there is no requirement for P R S for Washington County schools right now.
Okay, okay.
Handle that through the facilities plan, uh, review.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I, yeah, I didn't have any other questions.
I can just add one thing and that would be that. If a school, if it's sort of go forward as proposed. This new guideline for schools and there was a new school that Washington County was proposing that wasn't in their facilities plan and it. Qualified it, it met the student enrollment threshold and it too would be subject to guideline. But currently, there is no P R S guideline for students, other than. If you just, if a development generates three hundred twenty five students, so that's sort of measuring that impact on, on the school system, this infrastructure. But not that, what we're trying to get is making sure that we're. Seeing all of the impacts that go that other. Right? And I think one thing that's really important to remember is that through the facilities plan review, every single Washington County school. That's being newly proposed, it is actually reviewed as per. Even if it's small.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just. Appreciate, there's a, a lot of information here and I definitely appreciate kind of. Understanding the difference from the state standpoint, the first note that I. Had was, you know, you were mentioning all the requirements on the schools that you represent and, and. I was just trying to figure out, well, that's, that's not something that happens on every school. So I'm trying to understand and wrap my head around that. Um, so I definitely appreciate the, the conversation about that. That said, the one question that I think still comes up and, and it's actually noting it. And maybe a question for you, Jeremy, is, you know, this whole requirement is. Put in place on any facility that essentially requires an entitlement process through one of our jurisdictions. Right, not, uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, not every school. Of any sort, it's in that entitlement process.
I think it'd be any, any request for the use of land, so we've determined that even a building permit.
So.
I mean, maybe on a business license, if you went in and had to change nothing about the building and just got a business, I don't know that that.
Cause I'm not sure if I, if that tracks with. I, I guess where I'm going with this is I'm, and, and I may be kind of going off track, but certainly. You know, if it requires a change in zoning, especially used permit. An amendment to master plan, a tentative map or other approval of the land. So I wouldn't say a business license.
You wouldn't say.
I would not, and, and, and that's, that's my interpretation, a business license doesn't go through.
Correct, to the best of my knowledge, you've never really, uh.
So I guess where I'm, where I'm starting with this is, does every. School. Be it school districts. School district charter or state charter actually trigger, you know, if the land use means acceptable. If it's stoned correctly, if it's within all of their, and I don't, I don't know the answer to this, I'm just asking that question because I think there's, to me. One of the things that comes up is if every school requires this type of entitlement process. To our legal representative's point. This entitlement process through T M R P A can be concurrent with that. So to the point of the delay that you speak of, which I think we're, we've all heard that in our separate jurisdictions. We're not attempting to foster more of that upon you and that's not the intent of this at all. So to me, if we are in a situation where every school that you are doing is going through some level of entitlement process. To me, this is not an aris addition to that, this is the concurrent portion of that. That allows us, because I think that the, your point was, or excuse me, Jeremy's point at the very beginning. Um, the fact that the Lehman and Darrell are right next to each other and in two completely jur- different jurisdictions. And the point where we know the review of that is going to occur is at the regional level. Um, so I think there is definitely some concern and we can, you know, there's a lot of good points about the thresholds and the discussion and that that we're here, but. I absolutely believe that there needs to be some way that we incorporate. Both what the state is doing, what the school districts move their charge into a regional discussion. And doing that at the point where it's part of what is an existing entitlement process. I think that to me, it, it, it answers some of the question, you, you, your point answers that question that maybe there is some. Language that's put in there that, you know, when the request comes in. Right now, we have, you know, there's a review, a preliminary cursory review that goes into the entitlement package through different departments. Maybe that's changed, maybe charter school or something that has this situation. Becomes, you know, the review starts immediately, the, the clock or when it. Gets put onto the T M R P A planning agenda starts then and it's completely concurrent with the rest of the options. So to me, that was, that was where the first part, so to, again, understanding where we're coming from here, I think. This discussion has helped me kind of wrap my head around, okay, I get where the concern is coming. From a, a opening date standpoint, the school district shares that same opening date concern with their facilities. Albeit not necessarily on the same funding level, but that concern is, is one that's there as well, so, um. I think, not that I've asked a question, but kind of goes in the discussion part here, um. Me, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of incorporating some level of this and maintaining some level of this. And back to the original point, which was what is the threshold there? That's where I think. Understanding where we're coming from with the discussion of, of peak hours and more specific hours and, and you, you're absolutely right. This school doesn't generate the traffic count on a global level. But we're looking at that for subdivisions when cars are coming and going twenty four seven. This is a very targeted, limited time when we know, everybody in this room knows, I know from dropping off my daughter this morning. It's a mess at every school in the district. For a certain period of time in the day and at night and there's really nothing we can, you know, we're not going to change that, um. So, understanding what, a way to quantify that threshold and whether it's, you know, five hundred students. Because we're, we're picking off a, a lower number or, you know, six hundred, seven hundred, I think that's, that's the point of discussion, so. All of this non-question question is to say, thank you for the presentation. And, um, thank you for explaining this in a way that allows me to maybe wrap my head around. Exactly how we're going to do this in a way that, that makes sense for staff and for, um, you know, our. Our partners, I think, throughout the space here, so.
Well, thank you. And then Director Smith, I mean, when, when the subcommittee started meeting and when the regional planning started working at the P R S. With re- its relationship to schools. Charters, um, public and school district charters were in the conversation the entire time. We directed staff to reach out to, um. All of everything that makes up what a charter is. And so when. Cause we just didn't make this decision in the vacuum. Now I concur with. I mean, with Commissioner Reed because she did say at one point that she saw that five hundred threshold was too low. And Commissioner Johnson saying, you know, and then after looking at what. Um, T M R P A staff provided for us and what Director Smith provided for us is that maybe that threshold could go up to six twenty five, six fifty. Because, um, we have to, again, appreciate our role as regional commissioners. And the jurisdictions that we represent. And the community that we hear, hear from, it isn't just schools that we hear about, it's any development. And the first thing that will come up is traffic, infrastructure support and water. And we, without exception. Doesn't matter what. It tell me order changes, yes, but those, those will rise to the top. And so that's what our role is here and, you know, it wasn't an oversight that you weren't included. Cause it, it, you know, because, um, from what I understand, staff did reach out. And.
Interesting, Madam Chair, taking the record, you know, we did try to cast a wide net, we, we just weren't aware of academic. And I spoke with, uh, Amanda Safford from. One of the schools. Yeah, but that was a while back, it's been going on for a long time. But of course, it was great that Adam seriously from the school district actually suggested we talk with the state public school, or public charter school authority.
It's a long name.
It's a long name. It's, I mean, I was, I think it was great that. Mark, who, who there was running around and passed an even wider net and brought in people that he knew that we just didn't know you guys existed, so. It's, it's good that you're here now.
And, and it is good and that, and just so you, from our regional perspective, is that. Any kind of development has in there. And schools are in that. So.
And I'm sure you should, I have a question to that when we start to talk about numbers. I do have a question maybe in the process that we know that. With this, this development that you're going to get your charter. Is the, the application process, are you identifying the maximum enrollment as a part of that? And is that typically can measure it with the actual enrollment, if you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, for the record, Colton Loretz, um, there is a ten percent plus or minus on the enrollment caps that the authority authorizes. So take a clean example, a thousand students, you got plus or minus a hundred students there. Um, that's just for financial feasibility normally, so we're not going to mandate, the, the authorizer is not going to mandate. That you have a thousand if you can't actually operate with that staff level and all of the resources that go along with that student count, so. Um, yeah, the short is plus or minus that ten percent.
So then, when you start the process and when you get to the entitlement process and that schedule. Whatever application you're putting in is essentially based upon that enrollment level. And so you're expecting on day one to be plus or minus. Ten percent or, you know, a hundred on either side of that, so. I mean, one of the questions that we had originally was, you know, if we're, you know, is there the anticipation that these charter schools could. Um, grow in enrollment. And again, I'm talking about state, I'm not so sure if this is, uh, the same situation with the school district, which won't bring you into the question just yet. Um, but sometimes there is, you know, a school that would have a capacity. Set at a much higher level than what they're actually opening at. And I think that's one of the concerns that we had is that you could open, you know, you could have a school that, you know, eventually would be. High school enrollment level of two thousand, but. With all the initial applications prior to expansions and everything else, we're coming in at a much smaller level, so that's I guess why. One of the other issues with looking at the number, if you're saying, hey, whatever our number is that we're submitting, that is the number and any. Significant deviation to that is going to go through that whole process that you have, yeah.
Yeah, and to provide additional clarity, Colton Loretz for the record, uh, picked around example, as the example, nine sixty enrollment, on day one, they did not have nine sixty. They do a phase in approach, so they probably started with a K five, K six. And then those sixth graders would roll seven, seven to eight, eight to nine, so they. They haven't even seen a full cohort go from kindergarten to eighth grade, the accident been open for eight years. Uh, but soon they will and a couple, two or three years from now, they're getting that eight year mark, so some of those kind of runners would be. Through their whole system, you can pay to eight, so that's a little, uh, they're, they're authorized at nine sixty, they did not open in nine sixty on day one.
But the application was for the thousand students at day one.
No, yeah, nine sixty.
Right, nice, yeah.
I can probably add to that for a different record, at the authority level, we see. These things all the time and even, uh, every year they, schools have to come back and kind of report out on. Um, you know, enrollment numbers and struggles with that, we've even seen some schools in Clark County say, we actually need to lower our enrollment numbers. Um, and they have to get approval for that as an amendment. They also have to get approval from us, um, for amendment for more students, um, which we just approved for, um. Hybrid Academy in, in Clark County. Um, and some of those if it requires like a, a build out or expansion, that is a more involved process as well, similar to opening a whole other new school. Um, but when we see the applications come in, it is for, as Colton said, you know, this is what we're hoping for. And we're still coming out of the COVID years too, so we saw some of those schools impacted by that with their enrollment numbers. Even, um, I think every school district is struggling with that as well and we're trying to figure out where are the children, where do they go? Um, are they being old in school or hidden somewhere? Um, and so, you know, that is certainly something that's impacting our schools, but what I think is going to happen. Soon is, you know, we're going to see that ramp up again and, and some of these schools will start to hopefully get to capacity that they had, um. Uh, you know, set their sights on when initially applying. Um, but, but you are right, it is, you know, here's our goal, but we don't always hit that number in year one and it's a ramp up. And we've seen where some schools aim for K eight and they have to come in and say, well, we're going to do K three for this first year and see how we do. Um, we are noticing trends where, which are schools, they don't want to bring just one kid, they want to bring. Both kids and different grade levels and all that, so that mom and dad don't have to drive to different places, which would be insanity, right? So, um, we're kind of eyeing that as well with kind of new applications.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I guess, uh, Director, just a question for you.
Sure.
Um, and feel free to defer to someone else in the room if you want, but it's the same when we're looking at the Washington County School District. And their plan, um. Are charter schools included in that plan?
No, they're not.
Okay, so then this is a situation where that could come up. And. Would that be the same thing where we would expect a charter school to go through the process to be at its. Sort of assumed max enrollment at the time of application or have, you know, is there. Again, trying to get that same question of what, where, where we're setting the threshold that. Anticipating as we see, you know, these schools are growing, other charter schools could be going, doing the same thing. Are we looking at, at sort of a phased approach to understand that or? You know, would, would that be? I, my question just turned around on this all, but the idea of trying to understand when that application comes in, is that the maximum application? Or would that be a, a phased approach to?
Understand, I think I understand, um, Chairman for the record, so it's something we deal with, with P R S in general as, as a concept. And that, even if a development is based, right, and it's going to come in with a hundred units, you know, and it's two hundred units the next year and three of the next year. When it goes into that initial approval, we, we're asking that the entire development is contemplated and if it's in its entirety. It, uh, tr- triggers the P R S review, then we would want to have that reviewed right then. And then there's also, uh, language in the P R S guidelines that says if. You, you know, increase more, you know, say you put in the development, the apartment complex is five hundred units, doesn't trigger the P R S. Uh, guideline, right? But then, three years later, students are great, you want to add another two hundred units, all of a sudden you're at seven hundred. That would trigger then that project to come in for the P R S review at that time. And so I could see a similar path forward for a charter or private school that came through, let's say. You know, if that initial approval request was for four hundred students or something. And everything went well and it's under the threshold and it goes forward, but then it's doing very well and. There's a vacant lot next door or something and they want to expand. And then that would take an approval of land, let's say they want to expand it above five hundred or however we decide. Then that would trigger the, the P R S review at that time, so.
And then, I mean, and just to, again, to just kind of bring this to closure, so these, so then this body, you know, the recommendation to. Entire, um, planning commission is that, as we went through our plan update. And those things in terms of how we looked at that concurrence is to making it. Um, easier for and more transparent for review and. And, um, our citizens knew that we were making good big efforts to not put jurisdictions oppositional. To each other. And that, and that, and not oppositional to regional, so all of a sudden, regional planning look like the, the bad cop in the room. Because, you know, the city of Reno, city of Spartschur, Washington County did this and it was, here's the big bad person, if you're saying, no, you can't do that. So when we can do that concurrency and, you know. Jessica, you can, if I get off track, you can, but is it now that we can look at these and not cause that extra hardship? For Washington County School District or for the state level charter system or, or a. Parochial school that wants to come in and build a new campus, I mean, Little Flower Church is going through, I mean, their school is now going through. I mean, they're adding on to their school. Um, so the, you know, we're looking at that, that larger pitch. As a regional commission.
Madam Chair, Jessica, to that point, one of the statutes charges of regional planning is to ensure regional coordination. And that's exactly, exactly what your point was. And in the regional plan update, twenty nineteen plan update, we. Planning staff and adopted by the governing board is recommended by the planning commission, adopted a brand new policy. Um within the regional coordination policies for the initial review. Just to make sure that everyone has a fair shot, that developers' private interests are not put behind the ball economically. You're still satisfying your statutory charges, but getting ahead of everything, so there's no surprises at the end, it's not a game of dodge.
Yes, yeah, we want to get away from the game of dodge. So any commissioners, any other questions before I bring it back to the three of us for a recommendation? Commissioner Reed.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Um staff, any more input?
No, I think we're good, thank you very much.
So it's up to us now to make a uh recommendation to the larger, if we're going with our original on proposal. Or operating um a modification to to maybe um after the what TMRPA. TMRPA staff provided for us is that maybe that um student threshold could um be raised. Go ahead.
I'm I'm in favor of the threshold being raised.
And um in terms of when, meeting with staff and having conversations with staff. Um I'll just throw out, you know, this is not arbitrary, this is not data. Provide a number of six hundred and twenty five as a student.
That's the, I'm sure that's recognition based on the.
The data that was provided.
And that's, that's assuming, that's looking at a school, the number of trips. Based on the school day. So the the intent there would be, the number is capturing. The traffic, added traffic generated from a six hundred and twenty five student capacity school. Across the length of the school.
So the moderate range, so I could, I mean, I could use um Director Smith's chart and make that number six hundred and thirty.
Madam Chair, if you want, if you need me to bring that chart back up, want to talk more about it, we can. We we thought that uh it actually calculates to six hundred and thirty, if you look at a six hour school day window, the student enrollment. But in our guidelines and in state statute, there's this PRS number of six twenty five. Which is, you know, hold, that's kind of the basis of all of those criteria, and so it just sort of must seem like an opportunity. And but it but it is based on the two point four eight trips and trying to fit that in that six hour window, what would be the student enrollment? Uh that would generate that commensurate level of traffic signal in that time.
I I guess, I I appreciate the the data at this certain moment, I I do believe that 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 number increase um is appropriate. Um I think especially with the understanding and and, you know, the point that was made about, you know, there is an additional. This is coming to us after review at the local jurisdiction, so a lot of the issues. Spoke about today in terms of traffic lights and even stuff that you mentioned from our previous discussion. There is a local jurisdictional review of this to address some of the specific impacts. Um this is looking at it from a regional level, based on a number that gets to through the math. What would be our regional work, and I I could support that.
Commissioner Reed.
I'm still not sure, I I think, what are you supporting the six twenty five number, is that what, or is it six thirty?
On the six twenty five, based on.
Six twenty five, I can support that.
So counsel, you could remind me, since we are a subcommittee, we're making a recommendation to. In the form of a motion or just simply a recommendation to.
It is a motion, you guys recommend. I would recommend that you do it in a motion as a recommendation to Bobby as a whole.
So Madam Chair, um I will make the motion based on the discussion we've had today, that I will move direct staff present. Proposed RPC resolution, including the revised recommendation to place the threshold at six hundred and twenty five. Uh to the full body of the RPC for review and possible adoption.
I will second that.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, motion for recommendation carries.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question? Um so staff, when is the um. Do you have an idea when this would be presented to the full RPC for a discussion? And so that our, our this year.
Uh yes, well, I think we would probably plan to take it, Jeremy Smith for the record, uh to the next RPC meeting, which is the twenty seconds of June. So coming up, we would want to, I would, if we don't want to take it that quickly, for some reason not to. There's a July meeting as well, but I would like to get it solved within the June or July meetings, so then we can take it. The regional plan amendment to the governing board at their August meeting, just to ensure that the right, the most current version of the PRS guidelines. Are updated into the regional plan, it's still, you know, whenever you guys pass it, it will apply, but we we want to update the regional plan, which now contains that appendix.
And since the recommendation has been in the public eye for for several months now. Has a change from five hundred to six twenty five, I think we can do my center. You said, and then the Madam Chair, that's the only thing that's changing is the number, all the other details. Okay, um item six, um member or director's report, next to RPC, do we, will be determined if we need another.
If if we need it, we'll determine, otherwise, we just won't do it.
Yes, item B, legal counsel.
Uh Jessica, for the record, nothing to report.
Thank you, item seven, request for future GNIs. For immediate meeting, yeah.
If we did that, then we would actually have.
Um item A, public comment, do we have any public?
Any others for the record, uh commission, um I I would say that I'm a little disappointed that we didn't adopt a motion to ensure. That the processes happen simultaneously or concurrent with the processes that we go through local jurisdiction. Um I think it's um bad practice to just assume that staff, great staff will be here forever, because I know. Jeremy, uh Director Smith is an awesome person, but he won't be here forever, and that. You are memorializing processes in um this policy, and so um I am disappointed that one of the recommendations. We came as a community to memorialize that the process happens concurrently, um was not adopted in this motion. Uh second thing that I'd just like to point out that I hope uh engages for further commentary is that. Um there is a similar process to the facilities plan that the Washington County School District goes through, and and I believe that. The state public charter school already has a very similar type of process. Um I think that it does lend itself to perhaps favoritism in that. The Washington County Public Charter School Plan gets an approval process through staff separately of this process. And we can't engage the the SBCSA plan simultaneously as well, so I know that that was not a motion for consideration. I just asked the members of this subcommittee to contemplate what that might look like, uh maybe a change in the future. Um we believe that it is very similar, where our processes are rigorous and arduous. And we would hope that the same thing that Washington County School District Facility Plan goes through, we can also match and find. And so members, appreciate your time again today, but I would hope that uh perhaps you revisit a motion to memorialize the current um approval processes. Um maybe at the full commission level, and um maybe contemplate what the SBCSA does go through as well, thank you.
Thank you for that, um any written closing comments?
No, there's none.
Your turn, thank you very much.